Okay. We are recording, everybody now. Hello? Good?
You can adjust as you need to.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, I'm fine either way.
Are you sure, can hear us? Thank you. Audio check.
So we don't need your screen.
You can if you want, but it's okay to have all the videos going at once.
Blood relations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Good morning. Call me in order, we do have a forum, we have to take approval of the agenda in the minutes.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All favor I. All right, I oppose. Motion will carry. I see Rich is on there, but.
I'm here.
Okay.
Not much to say. Are you ready for me? There's not a whole lot to discuss, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just thought I'd tell you guys, we're getting, trying to get a patching quote yet. The crew was out, the, down by the fertile quarry of their BMC. We're still gonna try to do some patching yet, but I thought with the size of the patches out there, we could try to get somebody else to maybe get it done, but I'm still waiting for a number yet from them and trying to keep BMC informed. That bridge project going down there in 342nd, that one, we're getting materials and stuff and the contractor's getting geared up, but we're running into some material snags. So it'll probably be a while yet before they get the beams cast for that thing, so we don't really have a pre-con yet, so we don't know the contractor's schedule. Other than that, we're trying to get some things taken care of here, we'll start getting our rock maps put together. The thing I'm gonna worry about this year mostly is that with the COVID-19 and everything going on, that gonna be a little cautious on the amount of rock we put down this year, just because we don't know what the feds are gonna do with our funding. And so we've kinda done our rock run maps in Mitchell County and I already cut back on that one, and we can always add more later on if we know the feds are gonna fund us, but for the time being, I don't wanna, I wanna be pretty cautious on how much we're gonna put down and spend, and I hate that because all of our, all of our roads could use the rock, it's just that I don't wanna overspend right now. And there's a lot of unknowns, we can always do something later on.
So far, most of the roads aren't too bad, you know, but.
Right.
Wait a year and then they're gonna be terrible, so.
Right, and our affiliates been sending letters, I know they haven't, I know there's been discussions on, on funding in Washington and things like that, and our affiliates have been tracking that and sending letters and asking our locals to support some sort of a backfill for the losses, cuz the biggest loss obviously is that road use tax fund that comes from fuel taxes and, and auto licensing and renewals on, on license plates and things like that, so that's what we're gonna see, and they're, you know, I don't know if I told you this last week, they're predicting about a 25% decrease, so that's quite a bit of money when you're looking at, oh, probably a part of our budget, 2019, I don't have it with me, but, you know, we were probably pushing $2 million, a little bit more than $2 million out of that fund, you take 25%, that's a heck of a cut, half a million bucks, so. A half a million bucks is dang near a rock run, so. Anyway, just wanna keep you guys in the loop on that, other than that, there's really not a whole lot to report.
Sounds good, yeah, be very frugal on that, I guess until you get more information, if we're gonna get any help, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're just gonna proceed with caution for now.
Okay. Still have a question.
Yep.
A little bit to do with drainage, I've been on the, talking with Danny Martenson and Russ has been involved and Jack has been involved up on DD4 up there by Emmens, Minnesota.
Yep.
Two years ago, we cleaned that and they were in cleaning the bridge under 69 up there and then they got yanked out of there, I guess three out of the, two out of the three box culverts are still, got like two foot of silt in them. And was wondering, Craig was wondering if we could get that cleaned out, cuz I think Danny is gonna petition 500 or 600 feet of trees to get cleaned out on the Worth County side. Also to do some work in Winnebago and just take out some beaver dams and stuff, but we can't, been talking to Hudson, he hasn't gotten back to me, but we can't bill that back to the district, be inside of the district and there's no easements there or whatever, no right of ways. Been. Any chance we could look, getting that bridge under 69 cleaned out, getting that started.
So that's a state bridge, that's a state box, and when we cleaned that out last time, I think we had discussions with the state and I think they came and I thought they came and cleaned that, but I don't know if, they might have cleaned, I, I'm trying to remember if they cleaned the one cell and didn't clean the other ones, because the size of the culvert, the triple that's there is oversized for the district now that they didn't think it was a hindrance, but I don't know, that's something we gotta, we'll have to contact the state on, because that's their responsibility, clean that box out under 69 there. So we can definitely contact them and find out, but it seems like we contacted them last time.
If the guys in the district wanna clean, don't they have to clean it regardless of whether it's big enough or not? I mean, if we tell them.
Well. Well, to the, to the certain extent, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, you know, when I, when I looked at that, you look at the size of the district and I think the state oversized it, but yeah, I mean, if it's not causing a hindrance, they're, the DOT might have said, well, based on the hydraulics, it's not a problem, but that doesn't mean anything, we can contact the state again and find out, you know, if they can get that on their list to clean. I can't remember, that was a few years, quite a few years back when that all took place, and I know we contacted them and I thought they cleaned one cell out, but I.
Well, I think there's one cell clean, I was up there last week, I think, and looked and, and it looked like it was clean, but Craig said, no, at least two of the cells aren't clean, cleaned. There's two foot of silt in there, I mean.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of silt in them last time.
Yeah. So.
We'll follow up.
Guys were chased out of there when they were cleaning the last time, so they never finished the job, but, but.
Which guys were chased out?
Whoever was in there working didn't have the proper equipment, so they made them get out of there.
Oh, okay.
State did.
I wonder if, if that crew we had, that was theirs.
So. They had a bot cat or something down in there digging it out and they, they needed just a few more hours, they had it done, but they got chased out of there by the state.
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing is inside those cells, it's silted in and it's hard to get in there with anything, but, ah, but that doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell to me, but like.
Okay.
I know we, we cleaned around that stuff and opened everything up, at least in, in the private right of way, not the public right of way.
I'll be on check with the states, they would like to have it cleaned out, I mean, it is their district, so, and then.
Yep.
Clean the ditch and stuff, but. Okay.
We'll contact DOT.
All right, appreciate it.
Yep.
Anything else, Rich?
I'll stay on if anything comes up.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Um, resolution for destruction of noxious weeds?
Just, Mike Bodie sent this to me and it, there was just one, one weed that got taken off and otherwise it's the same as.
It's not animal thing?
Yeah. That'll go in a newspaper and all that good stuff.
Minus one weed?
Yeah.
Okay. To get a motion to approve the resolution for destruction of noxious weeds?
I move we approve the 2020.04.20 resolution for noxious weeds.
One second. All right, there's a motion, a second, in a discussion. Oh, that's for roll call vote, Abrams, aye, Smabye?
Aye.
Stone, aye.
Can I interject something quick?
Yep.
Can I make? Um, Mike, Mike got ahold of me the other day and he wants to start getting supplies and stuff for roadside stuff, and obviously that comes out of my budget, so I'm telling him that I, I sent him an email back, I didn't respond it yet, but I wanted to talk to you guys first, cuz I'm kinda trying to tell him to, his, 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 his goals are pretty high for trying to eradicate weeds here, but if we're using the secondary road budget, and I know you guys have a limited budget now too, I'm gonna have to have him throttle back on his ambitious plans because of the funding. I mean, he's talking about ordering chemicals now and, and with that hydrocedar getting some things purchased, which may or may not be too expensive, but I'm gonna have to kinda hold him back a little bit and reserve him, I know we still got duties to do with, with roadside weeds and whatnot, but just gonna have to tell him to be a little cautious too, cuz it's, it's our, it's our budget, but yet it's also the board's, you know, under the board's umbrella too with the roadside weeds, so I might have to score, tane back the management part of it, but we still have to eradicate weeds and we just gotta figure out how to manage that budget a little bit with this, with this COVID-19 and the loss of funds, potentially.
So, agree, just, just keep an eye on it like you would with your rock and stuff.
I do know that there's some pretty good chemical programs out there right now, I just heard that the other day, so there's some opportunity to buy some products a lot cheaper too, Rich, so. Depending on what you do.
Yeah. Yep, so.
More bang for his buck this year, hopefully, so.
Yep, so we'll keep an eye on that too.
Good.
Thanks. Uh, any grants?
Nothing, just, I was talking about their, Rich, that DD4, I've been talking to those guys all week, their, their big concern is, is a lot of the blockages actually farther down the line, I did have a conversation with Hudson, he told me at first we could go ahead and build it, then told me that apartment owner says, no, we can't go in there unless there's easements. Like Russ hooked all week, you, you guys were looking, couldn't find any easements to write away, it's all the guys, there's like two or three landowners in Winnebago County, it sounds like right now they'd be willing to get that to us. At least, you know, give us the right of way to go in there and do that. So, I did put a call into Hudson's, try it, if it wasn't, I haven't heard back, then, so, if you can handle it, or I don't know, Jeff can handle it, they could work it out.
So it goes into Winnebago, but we don't have like that shared?
No, and it was actually, the channel was actually dug quite a ways, according to what Russ said, in Winnebago County originally in 1906. I think it was, but there was.
No right of way.
There was never established right of way.
Did anybody go back and try to find it in their ashtray?
Donnie Conneson was gonna go to the bank and get his book, I don't know if he got it, he got it now, he didn't call in, received his phone, and so. If that's that, then that'd be great, and I think Russ was checking with Winnebago County to see if they had anything in common, so. But the guys would like to get in there, Craig walked it the other day. There's two or three old beaver dams that are restricting the flow of water, plus there's a bunch of bigger trees. And Bill Riggs actually from Winnebago County contacted me a couple of years ago and chatted that, and he kinda dropped it, he didn't do anything, he didn't pursue it. He's got an issue where he was mad because trees are coming down line and taking on his brand new fence, and would like to see that all cleaned up, in fact, he would have paid for it, but I think it would be sad, but. He wanted to work there, finish cleaning out our section, like I don't think much comes through there, can't get through the culvert, so. Come along, but. But, uh, so, anyway, people looking into it.
Uh, any claims? Nothing? Um, all right.
I got a report.
Nine o'clock for the.
All right. Fine, report.
All right, take motion to approve.
My report.
Audit report, report, yes.
I will make motion to further reports.
All second, all right, what can I say, the discussion, how much is it? Uh, $10,900. All right.
It's from the elections from that probably.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, all favor I?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Here. Uh, Winnebago, I don't see Melissa on there. Um.
I don't have anything new at this time except for Ken, CBN that we usually go to is on Friday, and he's doing a video thing, so I can send you the link.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yep.
Um, Jason Petersburg.
Not a lot to report on this week, we're still waiting on a deed. I've tried calling the casino, I've not received a call back even, so I don't know if anybody else has heard anything. We are, we are planning an onsite, pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning, eight o'clock. Have the utilities there, the contractors there, get everybody introduced, so they know who to talk to if any issues come up during construction. I believe the contractors have other work to do, at least the first half of this week, but by the end of the week, they may be in there getting started, there's some fence that needs to be removed, basically on items that are, that they can do under the original contract. What could allow them to hook into the lift station and extend the sanitary sewer down as far as that building of Diamond Joe's as well too, so.
Okay.
Find anything they can do to buy some time here as we hurry up and wait, so if anybody has any other contact information for Boyd, we need to get in touch with them and see where we're at.
Okay. Uh, we haven't heard anything in this office anyways, so. I don't wanna say. Wait.
I assume your attorney hasn't heard anything either.
No. Not that we've heard from him anyways, I'm assuming he would tell us right away if something came through, cuz he knows we're waiting for it. I will be out there at eight o'clock tomorrow to meet with you and everybody else, so.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jason. People's Service, Chris on the line of all discussing anything?
He was.
Not, okay. Payroll eligibility or salary changes? Nothing? Well, how about you, Joel, you ready?
Sure, all right, thanks, gentlemen. I'll start with the, the logger agreement, so just like we did with Hancock and Winnebago County, Serbro County has come to us and said that they would like us to host their logger traffic for the SE system. We've got plenty of capability, capacity in that system, shouldn't be anything different than what we're gonna be doing with the, with the other two counties. And the agreement is pretty much the same, they changed it just a little bit, so if you guys wanna just look that over, I don't know if you have any questions on that. You guys.
Yeah. No, I, I don't have any questions, I guess, if you guys are okay with it, with the other two counties, same thing, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll just need a signature. From you, Adrian.
Okay. Motion that probably. The motion to accept the data logger agreement to North County and Serbro County.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, another discussion. Here now, all favor I?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Carry.
Okay, a couple of things for me, um, the, our main data center storage appliance has reached the end of life, it's five years old now, and we have a five-year service contract on that, so, and it is getting to be out of the, out of developed data and everything else that we've added over the years. So I did, I have been last couple of months getting quotes from different vendors, comparing, contrasting, I don't know if I sent you the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Um, so, out of all the, the, what's for Dell, Pure, NetApp, Tentry, what I'm recommending is going with the NetApp A220, the 24 terabyte all-flash system. And what that is, there's no spinning disk, it's, it's all flash, so very fast, very responsive. The price on that is for a five-year contract was $104,000, and that's been budgeted, so. Really nothing, you guys need to take action on this, it's just more of an informational thing, it's. Um, and then probably installation on that is gonna run about $90,000, cuz they're gonna come in, take everything off the old one, put it on the new one, make sure we're up and running, and yada, yada, yada. So hopefully nobody should see a lot of downtime at all, except for the sheriff's office, but that's, you know, to be expected. And that should give us plenty of capacity, it's, it's expandable as well. If we need it to, if we need to add anything, I know I did build in the, the scanning project that the recorder's office and the otter's office and engineer's office are happy with. From US Ghost Imaging.
I think, yeah. When are we gonna start that?
Oh, we pushed it back to June, wasn't it, Jackie?
I think we did.
I think so, yeah. And that'll still give them plenty of time, they've been bringing a trailer.
Yeah.
24/7 on that, so. Uh, so that was informational, and then the other thing I, I sent you, so in the past, when we refresh storage, we've done a production storage, which sits here in the courthouse, and then a BR disaster recovery storage appliance that's somewhere else. In the past, it's been over at treasurer's office, and then we moved it to the public health office, and then we finally decided, you know, we're gonna put it down. We've had IP pathways in Des Moines hosting that appliance, so we've been paying one to have that appliance down there for about a year and a half now. And that's worked out real well, I mean, it's, it's out of the county, that way if something happens, you know, they can, they can spin it up. What I'm recommending, instead of buying another appliance or another box, is that we purchase their DR as a service program. Counties have done that now, so what we're doing is we're actually just buying storage from them, we'll buy and compute from them, or buy and rent from them. So that we can scale that up if we need to, for instance, if for some reason we lose this facility. Whether it's by natural disaster, the, the otter blowing up, the gas leak. Yeah, or else, you know, if, if we do get to the point where we do actually are moving away from this facility for, for a length of time. Having them take care of it down there, you know, we don't have anything purchased, we're just kind of renting, leasing, you know, buying the services from them. It's, it's a little spendy, if you guys look, I think I sent it to you, it's about $3,600 a month. But, and that sounds a little spendy, but included in that is a yearly test. So every year, once a year, we actually shut everything down here, we spin it up down there and see if we can run an entire operation without any big, you know, seeing the difference. Uh, and we've never really done something like that before, so that was kind of included in, in this price, and it's, it's pretty spendy to do that, to, you know, get all the balls in here and then settle that down there, but, you know, realistically, you know, if we did lose this facility, we could have everything back up and running within a half hour. Get back, I mean, it should be right, so. With all the fun stuff that's been happening lately, with this building issues and the ransomware stuff, I think this is a positive way to, to help our game as far as recovering from some sort of disaster. And backup.
So you're saying it's some sort of a pre-plan?
Sort of.
Play ahead.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit, just in case, but I mean, if, you know, we're doing it now, this is just taking what we're doing now and putting a little meat, more meat on those bones and then doing it a little bit more efficient. You know, because they've got all those resources down there, they, instead of, you know, if we would have done it the way we're doing it, I would have had to bring hosts in or servers in to power that, and it would have, you know, the uptime would have been a little less. Would have been a little tougher to get everything up and running, as opposed if it's down there, they just flip the switch and away we go. That's good.
That's a budgeted item as well.
Yep, yep, and I'll probably kick that off here, you know, as soon as we're done with the production one, then we'll probably kick that service off.
And I think that file I've got on my side.
You got your drone policy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, thanks Kenny, the drone policy.
Um. So Mark went out and created a drone policy for us, it's, I think it even is. Um, and basically just spells out what we can and cannot do with the drone, to add the county, since, you know, we are a commercial, yes, or business. There's certain restrictions the FAA puts on us as far as what we can and cannot do with that, as far as pilots, you know, or people operating have to have the part one seven. Um, and then I think we spell out, you know, for safety, for law enforcement, you know, for, I think, you know, what we did with drainage ditch, you know, making sure that we're using that for, for county business, and so, if you guys took a look at that. And just to, if you guys wanna adopt that policy, that'd be fantastic, uh, Mark, do you have anything else on that one?
I'm here, I just had to. I just had to get the mic turned on, um, no, it's, you go through it, it, it pretty much just spells out what we've been doing and stuff. Like most things, you really should have a policy to protect yourself and protect the county, because people can come back and say, well, you were using, you know, what's your policy on drones, do you have a policy that you can't fly around and look in my windows or fly over and look at my house or whatever, and and so you have the policies in place, or something happens.
Okay.
What do you do, why you do it?
It's typed up, right?
Yep, it's all typed up, where you go, I think we just did the draft on there, so once you guys approve it, we'll take draft off in the next day. If there's any additions or corrections to that.
I haven't seen them. No, it looks good to me, it just, it covers us for those FAA rules basically, so.
Yep.
I understand, well, so I guess we'll take a motion to accept the drone policy.
So move.
Hold on a second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we will get that to us and we'll sign it.
Sounds good. Thanks, gentlemen.
Make it official. Thank you.
Is that all I have, Kenny?
Yes.
We got eyes right path, thanks.
Yeah, I got them. Thank you for keeping me on.
Okay. Um, we'll wheel through some department head stuff here for just a few minutes until Elizabeth gets on at nine o'clock. Dan, thank. Anything you need to discuss?
Um, just a few things, we are gonna be lightening up a little bit on our COVID stuff over here, we're gonna start doing fingerprinting out our lobby for those that need it for childcare services and for those that are looking for jobs. We are gonna start bringing in judgment and sentence people that we've been holding off on, but they do have to go through a, a hell screening prior to coming in. And then we do have some vendors that we've gotta get in here to get some work done that we're gonna bring in, but they will be required to wear masks the whole time they're in the building, and then again, get their temps checked in and out of the building each time they come back in, so we're gonna open up a few of those things, as far as the COVID stuff are doing good. We're still working down the river, we'll have some changes in what we're doing down there hopefully this week, so that's all I have, unless anybody has questions.
I don't. No. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh.
I did have one other thing for me, um, Larson's did come in and put in the new air conditioning system.
Oh, for sure.
Last week, they had, they had done, and got it in quick and, and so far so good, so. That new system seemed to be doing. And Levi and I had a great discussion and he pretty much said if, if this one goes, has some issues that we can reach out to him night or day, 24/7, so. I have assurance.
Good idea. All right, um. I don't file on today, unless I'm not seeing anybody.
Well, Jake said, Chris said, Jim Anthony said.
Um. There we go. All right, sorry, I have it on full screen, uh, Mark Thompson, do you have any, as far as department head talk?
Yeah, just a quick update on some numbers there, the, the one case that we did have, it down shows recovered on the website. And 82 people in Worth County have been tested, and that was the only positive test they had. As of now, service area two, the region two that we're in, currently sits at a seven on the, on the one to 10 scale. That's where we initially started, over the weekend, we were down to a six, but back up to a seven, and if you probably heard.
But back up to a seven. Uh, and if you probably heard the region six or in the northeast corner there at a ten, they had. Some additional recommendations placed on them as far as gatherings and stuff to very limited amounts of who they could gather with and stuff. And then uh, the uh, the southeast and and south central both are at nine right now. So they're they're, the outbreak is still strong in Iowa. I don't think we've reached our peak yet. Um, obviously, if you've been following the news, you you hear where the problems are. Long-term care centers and meatpacking plants, so. Um, the long-term care centers in North County, I believe, you know, are still are sitting good. They've. They've done their due diligence on testing their employees, make sure that they're not sick when they come to work and they're and they're as prepared as they can be. With DPE and and all their policies. So they're, you know, in North County, we're sitting good here. Um, as of the time being. Um, as far as other stuff coming from the state, they did uh. Announce that they they're getting some more EMPG grant money that'll be coming out um. July first, they're looking at some stuff for that. I'll get with Joel on that. See if there's anything he wants to do. They, one of the things I said was. To strengthen EOCs. I don't know what I'll I'll read through their guidance a little more and then maybe get with him and see if there's something that we can. Incorporate into the virtual EOC concept on that. I think our EOC. Physically sits pretty good over here, but the the virtual part maybe could be strengthened a little more or something. Um, and that's my pit on the same. So. Oh, we did get the uh, the WCDA grants come out. I think I told AJ last week. For the tornado siren out by the uh, or all-weather emergency alert siren out there by the casino area. Um, looking at a place that we're gonna probably install that. Work with AJ and Jason on that, so.
Yeah, Jason and I have talked on that. We've got two options where we can just tie into power that the county's already paying for.
Great idea. I mean. New service.
Exactly, so. All right.
You might want to watch that count because the one that was cleared got put back on. So I think we're still at one that's active. Jessica. Might be able to uh clarify that a little more.
We'll talk to that about that in just a few more minutes, guys. Uh, it's nine o'clock, so I've gotta get Elizabeth going on her audit stuff and then I'll come back to uh. Uh, the um. Department head discussion, so. Uh, hello, Elizabeth. How are you?
Good morning. I am good. How are you guys? This is definitely not how I'm used to doing this, but um, it's working, I guess. Does everybody have their audit book in front of them or? Okay, well, I will try to make this short and sweet and hit the high points. And of course, if you have any questions or concerns, please. Just go ahead and let me know. Um, I guess the first place we'll start is the independent auditors report, which is on page two. It's on Gardner and Company letterhead. Um, we completed the audit for the fiscal year ended June thirty of two thousand nineteen. And um, again, an audit, the purpose of an audit is to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. The purpose of an audit is not to find fraud or find errors or irregularities, but we report on that if we find anything. But. Again, the purpose of the audit is to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly stated. We base our opinion on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county during the year. Um, and then this report just goes ahead and outlines all of that. And we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirty two thousand nineteen, which is what you want to hear. Uh, that means it's a clean opinion. Uh, we, on the financial statements, we believe that they are fairly stated. Now, during the course of our audit, we did find some material misstatements, um, couple errors. So we did propose adjusting journal entries that were made by the county then to include all the appropriate transactions in the financial statements. That are contained in this report. On page five, we start the management's discussion and analysis. And that is just some comparative information. Um, it gives the financial highlights for the year. Uh, gives Jackie a chance to talk about the budget a little bit and also about the economic factors in the two thousand twenty budget. Um, it also shows some comparative financial statements comparing fiscal year nineteen with fiscal year eighteen. Uh, the actual financial statements start on page thirteen. And again, there actually are three sets of financial statements within this audit report. You have the full accrual. Which includes all your capital assets and your debt, which is the most uh similar to what you would see in the private sector. So we have the statement of net position, which is exhibit A. And that's kind of like your balance sheet in the private sector. And then exhibit B is your uh statement of activities and that's kind of like your income statement. Uh, if you were out in the private world. So again, um, those are the full accrual financial statements. Nothing too, you know, exciting there. Um, on exhibit B, page fifteen and sixteen. Um, the net position of the county as a whole increased four point six million dollars. And a good share of that is due to the tower project that was completed um during this last fiscal year. Uh, you did receive a significant amount of grant money for that. And so that's recognized as, um, you know, about almost two million dollars worth of that. Increase in net position is is due to that tower grant. Um, exhibit C and exhibit E. Those are your modified accrual financial statements. Uh, that mirrors what the Jackie submitted to the Department of Management known as the GAAP report. So this doesn't include the capital assets and related debt. This shows a sixty-day accrual period. Um, and again, because the Department of Management requires you to file the GAAP report, then we go ahead and we include those modified accrual financial statements in our report as well. Exhibit D and F then, those step you through on how you get from the modified accrual to the full accrual. So it just goes ahead and details out. The adjustments that were made uh to get to the between the two. Exhibit G, H and I then are in regards to your proprietary funds. And again, we have a statement of net position, a statement of changes. And then we also have a cash flow statement for that. And again, you know, pretty, pretty basic, pretty straightforward, no surprises. Um, you know, no big, no big changes or anything going on with those proprietary funds. During this fiscal year. And then exhibit J on page thirty-one, uh, that's our statement of fiduciary assets and liabilities. And this is just a snapshot of the balances that the county had at June thirtieth of those funds that you're collecting the tax for. Or acting as a fiscal agent for. So your corporations, your townships, your schools, where you've collected those taxes and you're holding to go ahead and. Uh, pay them out then the next year. Um, on page thirty-two, we start the notes to the financial statements and I am going to skip over all of those unless there's specific questions. Uh, the notes, just go ahead and detail out your significant accounting policies and procedures. Um, it gives amortization schedules for your debt. It gives extra definitions of all of the balance sheet items. Um, it talks about your insurance plan, your health insurance plan. Um, also gives information about the pension and the OPEB. The actuaries that compile the pension expense and liability numbers. They provide us pages and pages of information to include in the audit report. Same with Bob Hobson, who does your OPEB work for you. Um, again, he provides pages and pages of disclosures for us to add in. So the next place that I'd like to stop is on page fifty-seven. And that is the third of the financial statements. Uh, because the county budget's on a cash basis. We include a budgetary comparison schedule in our audit report. So we show the actual cash that came in for those governmental funds. Um, the column that is entitled less funds not required to be budgeted, that is your drainage. Because drainage is not included in your budgetary items. It's not included on your cash report either. So then we take those out to get to your net. And then for the budgeted columns, we have an original budgeted amount and then we also have your final amended budgeted amount. And so then we show those comparisons. Um, there weren't any budget over expenditures at June thirtieth, which you can see on the final to net variance column. There are a couple significant variances, uh, the capital projects being one of them. The variance between what was budgeted and what actually was spent was a little over a million dollars. Um, a lot of that's attributed to our mother nature not cooperating and projects just don't progress as anticipated when she's not cooperating. So. All the variances noted there had reasonable explanations, so there weren't any red flags, you know, raised with any of that. The following pages is some more required supplementary information, um, and some more um, information about the budget. There's also a few pages that are required for the IPRs disclosures. Um, again, we're required to disclose what the county's proportion of the net pension liability is and to to provide that information. Um, there's a five-year schedule on page sixty with that. That will increase up to a ten-year schedule to be able to see the trends. Following that, there's a ten-year schedule of the county's contributions to IPRs for the last ten years. And again, some more actuarial information follows that. Um, on page sixty-six, we start uh the non-major governmental funds, um, financial statements. For all the smaller funds that the county has. Uh, these are all aggregated and presented as one column entitled non-major. On the financial statements in the front of this book. So schedules one and two, just go ahead and give you the fund-by-fund information. schedules three and four do the same thing for your fiduciary funds. So those again are those funds where you're acting as a fiscal agent. Schedule five is just your schedule of revenues by source and expenditures by function for the last ten years. So that just kind of gives you a snapshot of. Of the revenues and expenditures for the last ten years. On page seventy-six, we get to another independent auditor's report and this is the one on internal control or financial reporting and compliance. As far out of the audit, we do uh look at internal controls and to determine that uh proper segregation of duties is happening. Um, the, we also uh receive a code compliance guide from the state auditor's office where they have us test some code compliance. Uh, items as well. And they uh go ahead and provide the guidance and and kind of mix it up what we're looking at every year and then we report accordingly. So this report just kind of goes ahead and again talks that our findings are based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the the county during that year. And so had we looked at something different, you know, with the code compliance, we might have had a different outcome. Uh, but this letter just kind of leads into this, the schedule of findings, which starts on page seventy-eight. Again, we have segregation and duties finding, which you're always gonna have just due to the fact that you're a small county and you can't entirely segregate. The recording and the custody of the cash. So, um, you know, we just have the department heads fill out an internal control questionnaire every year. Um, and update that if there's been any changes and we just ask that you segregate as much as possible, cross-train your employees. Um, keep having those discussions about, you know, if you hear about a fraud that's happening in another county or something. You know, you you brainstorm and be the devil's advocate and, you know, could this happen here and how can we prevent that from happening here? So. Um, segregation and duties is always going to be a a friend and included in the report. Uh, the second finding is again preparation of full disclosure financial statements. And because you don't have a CPA on staff that does the GAAP report and compiles the full accrual financial statements and related footnote disclosures. We assist with that. And then after uh the draft has been prepared, then Jackie goes ahead and approves and takes responsibility for those financial statements. So we can go ahead and issue it. But because we assist with that preparation, we have to put this finding in the report. Um, on page seventy-nine, we do have a financial reporting finding also. Uh, we had material amounts of receipts. Uh, tax increment financing proceeds, accounts receivable and capital asset additions and construction in process that we found. During test work that had not been properly recorded in the county's financial statements. So. We went ahead and proposed adjusting journal entries, which were accepted by the county. Those entries were made, so those transactions were properly included in the financial statements. On page eighty, we start the other findings related to required statutory reporting. And these are the findings that the state auditor's office provides a code compliance guide and they have us test various things to make sure that the. Transactions are entered into per the code of Iowa. Um, we do have a related party disclosure. Um, with Dawn Knitson in the sheriff's office. Uh, the potential conflict of interest threshold is fifteen hundred dollars. For counties. Um, and during this fiscal year, there was a little over ten thousand dollars worth of transactions. But again, these were entered into properly. The code does provide loopholes for going ahead and and doing business with those small businesses and related parties. Um, and Dawn doesn't participate in the acquisition of those services. And so this isn't allowed thing. So there's no finding associated with this. It's just for transparency. Um, on page eighty-one, we have a finding about the annual urban renewal report. Um, this is the urban renewal report that is due to the Department of Management by December first. Uh, we did notice some discrepancies between what was reported on that report and what was actually happening on the county's financial statements. Uh, this was due to that escrow account with Baker's Trust when you did the crossover refunding of the debt. And um, that amount was not included on the urban renewal report. But since that debt has now been refunded going forward, this this finding should go away. So we should be okay. On page eighty-two, we have a finding related to the interfund transfers. Uh, we noted that not all of the transfers were approved by resolution in the board minutes and that is required by the code of Iowa. Um, and it was also noted that not all of the approved transfers actually got made on the general ledger. So going forward, all operating transfers need to be approved by resolution as directed by the code. And then if they can go ahead and be recorded on the general ledger, the same day that they're approved by the board, that would probably be the best practice. And then the last statutory finding we have is the financial position of the New Heaven Tiff Fund. And it has a deficit fund balance. And that's something that, you know, will eventually resolve itself with the collection of those tax increment financing revenues. So we just have to be patient and let that fund accumulate the revenues to go ahead and take care of that deficit. And that's what I have for report findings. So do you guys have any questions or concerns or anything I can help with?
No, I have a lot of numbers there. A lot to take. Yeah, it's, you know, me personally, I look at that and I think, holy cow, how does this place even function? But that's crazy. But we appreciate the, what you found and, I mean, everything seems like it's all just. Nothing major, right? Looks all, looks good as far as you see.
Yeah, um, and the other thing that we really struggle, continue to struggle with is the Tyler um software. Version ten is not kind. Um, and I've talked at length to both Jackie and Jake and Amy about it and. It's just a struggle to get good numbers and to get good reports, good information. Um, you know, that's kind of an ongoing thing and. I guess until Tyler makes the appropriate changes to their programs to make it user-friendly, you know, it's something we're gonna be dealing with.
Something that's probably not gonna change for a while then, I'm assuming.
No. We've had a couple other counties come on with version ten in the last, um, you know, a couple years and. They had the same struggles. Pretty much everybody that's on version ten struggles to balance every day. And that is something that's so basic and it should not be an issue at all. Um, you know, balancing your. Your cash at the end of the day to the general ledger, it should be something that takes five minutes and. Um, you know, these other counties are having the same problems where they're spending days tracking down why they don't balance. So it's frustrating.
Yep, understandable, so. Okay, I don't think we have anything else for you. We appreciate your time, Elizabeth.
Hey, well, if I can be of assistance throughout the year, um, you know, both Jackie and Jake know how to get ahold of me, so.
They got chat speed dial, so. All right, thank you, Elizabeth.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, we will, any, any else you have to discuss on that? Okay, or? All right. I'm gonna move back into the uh department head discussion and. Go to uh Jessica Ryerson.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Alrighty. Um, yeah, I don't really have any new information at this moment, but um, things are going well here. Uh, continue with business and providing services with adjustments and adding the necessary precautions that we need. Otherwise, we continue to work closely with IDPH and pushing out information as we get it from them, so.
We have had several people tested around here. Just, just the one positive is all that's changed or showed up anyways, right?
Yep, and I would just refer, you know, refer you guys to go to the IDPH website where you can get a lot of data. You click on, it's the COVID nineteen Iowa dashboard and you click on Worth County. And then it's got all kinds of information and data for you.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Sounds good. Any questions for your busy? All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, monitor, anything?
No.
No, all good. Okay, it's like recorder and mix assessors are doing all right. They're in rotation again this week, so it's good. Uh, but Jim Hanson.
We are just continuing to do business kind of as usual, other than being.
We are just continuing to do business kind of as usual, other than being close to the public. Um, two Fridays ago, we did advertise our full-time position that'll be starting July first. And then just to piggyback kind of off of what Mark said earlier about WCDA grants, we had applied for two different grants and we received both of those, so that's kind of my update.
Fantastic. What, what did you, what did you guys apply for? What'd you get?
We got, uh, a, like a twelve-passenger transit vehicle for Dakota to take the kids for the Young Naturalist program and then to help transport when they're doing stuff with the school programs. And then we also got a bunch of, or a set of kayaks and a kayak trailer.
Okay, cool. Sounds good.
Public, so.
Awesome. That sounds like a pretty good deal, so. All right, well, continue on, I guess. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Jake Hanson, do you have anything?
Can you hear me?
We got you.
All right, uh, I got this week, uh, Callie and I are working from home and Steph and Amy are in the office. Uh, still business as usual as far as during this COVID thing. Um, we're trying to get more and more, just get transactions done, uh, through the mail, through our Dropbox. And, uh, the tax revenue is still coming in pretty steady. So, um, we haven't seen anything really that way different this year, which is nice, uh, during this. And hopefully, uh, we just kind of get through this year here. Uh, tax sale, we, uh, are still gonna be online again like we were last year. So that shouldn't have, uh, the COVID thing, no matter how long it goes, I guess, shouldn't really affect that. So by the end of the, uh, fiscal year, I don't see any changes. All our taxes are usually collected besides the mobile home stuff, which is more or less bonus money for us. So, uh, that's, that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Okay, fantastic. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
You got everybody? I think so. Okay, oh. Supervisor, weekly reports.
I just had a teleconference with the partner, Jones, the partner for health. That makes the city. Suppose I have a letter to sign here and I have not received that yet, so. Sounds good.
Oh, yeah, dude. Zoom meeting, um, teleconference with, uh, our workforce department, the new region we're looking at forming. And I discussed, uh, some RFDs for getting some things and, and, uh, some of the people in place. Just slowly moving ahead, um, working with the state on this to get it done. We got our timeframe extended a little bit, which helps, gives us a little more time. It's not quite as crunched, but we are moving forward. All three regions were, all three original regions were forming a new region. I think we can get along real well. And, uh, hopefully make this work. Also, I want to work back though, you know, meeting there, um, not a lot of discussion, you know, just more about what's going on around here in the world, you know? And then we also had a teleconference with the assessors board that discussed, uh, discussed having a car here and stuff all the time, so.
Is it?
Yeah, we did.
Cool, that's all I had was the, uh, assessment board conference and, uh, want to work back as well. So, yep, just kind of. When we're back over, yeah, business quarterly meeting is normal, I guess, and maybe a little possibility development for Winnebago County, so.
And we have a re. Resigned employee.
Yeah, yep, our marketing director resigned this nation, so we'll be discussing that in the future and how that office is gonna operate and what we'll do to replace her, so if we do, if we do, so. Or that's all I had, so. Uh, maybe we need to put on the agenda next week or future.
Are we looking at continuing to try to have these drainage meetings? Are we gonna do them by Zoom or what are we gonna do?
I emailed them last week because the notices will have to go out this week.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Uh, I'll keep you guys.
I mean, if you're doing Zoom, we just will do Zoom, I guess.
Keep it rolling.
As for now, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And if we can get the assessments done and stuff, it just.
I would say let's move ahead if we can.
I'm just really sure.
I know.
What do you do?
Right, keep plugging away the best you can.
Okay, I guess there's nothing else coming for the board. I'll take the, uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, motion and second, the discussion. Okay, Ryan.
All right.
Aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.